Good afternoon. I will call to order the October 2nd meeting in the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Gagnon, Magrino, Slack, Swayze, Lukey Pier, Vreeland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the September 18th meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. They have a motion, and is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we will sort the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be considered on the consent agenda and which items we will discuss. So, starting at the top of the agenda, Item 1 is a vacation in the vicinity of Garfield Avenue South. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 1? See, no one will put Item 1 on consent. Item 2 is at 504 29th Avenue Southeast, 501 and 518 Malcolm Avenue Southeast. That is a registered land survey. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 2? See, no one will put that on consent. Item 3 is the Target Field Station Mixed-Use Project at 505 Sixth Avenue North. Several applications there for a mixed-use building. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 3? See, no one will put that on consent. Item 4 is at 401 University Avenue Southeast. Several applications for a new multifamily building at that location. I understand we have a few people who would like to speak on that, so we'll discuss Item 4. Item 5 is at 3,000 4th Street Southeast, 3024 4th Street Southeast, and 3033 University Avenue Southeast. Several applications for a new mixed-use building at that location. And is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 5? See, no one will put Item 5 on consent. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 1, 2, 3, and 5 will be on consent, and we will discuss Item 4. They have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we will consider our committee the whole consent agenda, and Vice President Slack, you have an update.
Thank you, President Brown. At the September 19th, 2017, we heard two items. The first was a land sale at 1314 James Avenue North. The recommended motion from the Planning Commission was that the item is not consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth. And the second item was a series of land sales at 2916 14th Avenue North and 1124 24th Avenue North. And the recommended motion there was to approve the staff report that the item was consistent or is consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right. Thank you. And may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second, finding that those two items are... Well, I should clarify again. Item 1, we found, is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Item 2, the sales in that item, we found were consistent. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's Items 1, 2, 3, and 5. Again, is anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? See, no one. I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our one item for discussion. That is Item 4, 401 University Avenue Southeast, and staff is Ms. Smith. And we considered this item at Committee the Whole a number of weeks ago. Perhaps you could go over some of the things that have changed since that meeting.
Good evening, President Brown and Commissioners. So, this is 401 University Avenue Southeast. It's located in the R5 Multiple Family District and also the UA University Area Overlay District. It is across from the General Mills site, which is also located within the East Hennepin Activity Center. University Avenue is a community corridor in this location. The surrounding uses are varied. There's an apartment building to the east of the site. There's a church to the north. And then there are a mix of residential densities near the site. Here is a view from University. You can see the site. Here, there are currently two multifamily homes on the site. And here's the view from 4th. Those are the two buildings that would be removed. The project that is proposed is a five-story apartment building with 43 dwelling units and 18 enclosed parking spaces that would be accessed off of 4th Avenue Southeast. There are a number of applications that are required. So, the first is a conditional use permit to increase the maximum height in stories. So, the maximum in R5 is four stories, 56 feet, and the applicant is proposing five stories, 52 feet, 4 inches. So, in feet, it's slightly shorter than the maximum permitted height in R5. There are also numerous variances for front, corner, and side yard setbacks, which are listed in the application, in the staff report. There is a variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 2.4 to 2.9. The application does qualify for one density bonus for enclosed parking. And then there's also a variance to reduce the minimum parking requirement from 21 spaces to 18 spaces, and to increase the maximum percentage of parking spaces that can be provided as compact spaces rather than standard. So, the maximum is 25%, and the applicant is proposing 94%. That translates to 17 spaces are compact out of the 18 that are provided total. And site plan review. Here are the floor plans for the development. So, you can see there are two entrances, one off of 4th and also one off of University Avenue Southeast. The residential lobby and associated amenities are mostly concentrated towards the university side of the first floor. And then the 4th Avenue Southeast facade would contain about half parking. So, half would be fitness center, kitchenette area, common space. And then you see that there also is a substantial amount of parking that does require alternative compliance for ground floor active functions. But this has been an improvement over the Committee of the Whole project that you have reviewed. Part of that is because the applicant has also reduced the number of units that they were proposing at Committee of the Whole from 51 to 43 units. And then floors 2 through 4 look like the image on the right, as a reminder. So, all of the dwelling units would have one bedrooms, or they would be efficiencies. And then floor 5, you can see there's a deck at the corner of the intersection. The primary exterior materials are burnished block around, along the ground floor, fiber cement lap siding, and also metal panel. The image on the top is the view from the interior side, and then the image on the bottom is the view from 4th Street. And here are the front and the back elevations. Here are some renderings. Here is a rendering in context of the surrounding uses. You can see the residential, the apartment building to the east of the proposed site. Here's a view from 4th. So, I'm just going to focus on the bulk applications today, just because that's what we've received the most comments and interest on. So, the conditional use permit from height again is to increase from four stories to five stories that's permitted. Staff finds that it's consistent with the 56-foot height limit permitted in the R5 District. The site is uniquely situated in close proximity to multiple transit lines, bike lanes, commercial amenities. The U of M campus and downtown are also within walking distance. University Avenue Southeast is a commercial corridor, as I mentioned, and it's across from an activity center, and it's two blocks to the west of the neighborhood commercial node at 6th Street. So, staff finds that this is an appropriate location for higher-density residential uses. The bulk is also concentrated on the site more towards the intersection and a little bit more away from the nearby residential uses to the north and east. In fact, the building would increase the amount of distance between the existing buildings and the neighboring buildings. So, along the east side, the nearest residential property would be 13 feet away, and then the church would be increased to 22 feet along the north side, where right now it's 18 feet. Staff also finds that the increased height has been mitigated by exceeding the number, the amount of windows and landscaping on the site. The building across the street is the General Mills Offices, and that building is 65 feet tall. So, staff finds that this development would be consistent with the mix of uses and would actually provide a good transition from those higher-intensity uses down to the lower residential uses in the neighborhood. There are also a handful of projects in the area that would be consistent with the character of this project. So, there are a few... There's one on University, and there's one on 4th Street. One has four stories, and one has five stories, and both have over 40 dwelling units. The Marcy Homes Neighborhood Master Plan was adopted in 2014, and it does specifically call for medium density on this site. And this would qualify as very high density because the units are quite, are small enough to meet that number of dwelling units per acre for that type of, for that density characteristic. However, the master plan, like most small-area plans, does not have a height specification. Staff finds that the other aspects of the plan that look at whether there is safe pedestrian access and bike access and adequate landscaping and transitioning to lower-density residential uses, those aspects of the small-area plan are met with this application. And then increasing the floor area ratio from 2.4 to 2.9. Again, this is a site that's uniquely situated. It has, there's a community corridor along University Avenue Southeast, and there are many amenities, including transit and bicycle access in the area. The 6 is, the 6 and the 10 are high-frequency transit routes that are within a quarter-mile of this development. And then staff would also note that there are active ground floor uses along University Avenue while alternative compliance is requested on 4th. The applicant has also proposed to vary the massing and the exterior materials on the building to break up the bulk and the effect of that bulk. Here is a contact study provided by the applicant showing where the development is at 4th and University. Here's the shadowing study. There are some shadowing effects. There are no known solar, there are no solar energy systems in the immediate vicinity. The applicant has requested three items for alternative compliance, and I've listed the staff recommended conditions of approval that correspond with those. So, first, the landscaping that's shown on the landscaping plan is a little bit different from what you've seen on the elevation. So, staff just wants that to match up a little bit better. So, we want to see a lot more diversity and seasonal interest and also make sure that there are active living walls, I should say, along the elevation facing 4th Avenue Southeast that would also help to mitigate the ground floor active functions that are lacking. And then regarding the exterior materials, there is an excess of fiber cement, so an excess of the 30% maximum along the east and the west. Staff recommends approving this. However, we want to make sure that there's at least a six-inch relief between the two, the two different materials so that it does help to break up the massing. Staff does recommend approval of all applications before you with those conditions of approval. We've received a handful of comments from the neighborhood group and from neighbors. The neighborhood group does not recommend approval of the project as proposed with the five stories because of the FAR request as well. And I, but they said that they'd be open to recommending approval for a slightly different scale of a project. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? And if there are none, I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and please state your name and address for the record, and feel free to add anything to that presentation.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Scott Nelson from DJR Architecture at 333 Washington Avenue North. And I would just like to say that on behalf of the developer and applicant, we would accept all the conditions recommended by the staff report by mailing, and thank them for mailing, as well as Janelle, who initially started working on this project with us some time ago. In particular, I'd like to add that Item 7 on the conditions talked about the landscape, adding some additional landscaping for interest and variety on the front and on the 4th Avenue side. I think between us and our landscape architect on the landscape plan that was submitted, I don't think they got all of the last changes that we wanted to include on both the fronts that are shown on our renderings, and we very much would intend to work with staff to provide those, in addition to the two sections of live wall that were shown on the part of the west elevation that is garage. And when the plan that we showed at the Committee the Whole, we increased the active uses along the 4th Avenue side from, I think, what was 23% to approximately 50%. That was something that was important to the committee when we, when we presented at that time. We also reduced the number of units from 51 to 43. That was, helps both the parking variance as well. So, I'm available for questions. Dan LaBrue from CPM Development is here as well, if you have any questions for us.
Commissioner Cronze.
I just have a question. Scott, do you know how the building gets managed with such a large number of compact parking stalls? I mean, do they require their tenants to have smaller cars?
Are, they will be assigned spaces throughout. Our, our understanding and experience in using smaller spaces is, most of the folks that would have spaces in here would have smaller cars anyway. And we, and we have kept the required aisle at the, at the 22-foot width, which we have found works quite well.
Any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can continue on with any other speakers, and you can decide who would like to go first, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, President Brown and Commissioners. My name is Ted Tucker, 319 5th Street Southeast in Minneapolis. I'm here representing the Marcy Homes Neighborhood Association. You saw our letter in your packet, which pretty much says what we're, our objections are, and staff characterized it correctly. The main problem with this project is it's one story too much. Five is inappropriate for the north side of University Avenue, which in the 2014 Marcy Homes Master Plan is a medium-density area in transition from a higher-density area on the south side of University. In fact, within the next few months, you will be looking at a project on the south side with much more intense development and taller buildings. Part of the master plan is to have a transition area from the high-density down to the lower-density R2B, single-family and duplexes, which is the low-density core of the Marcy Homes Neighborhood. So, we ask you to deny the CUP for five stories, and we believe by doing so, you will also eliminate many of our other objections to this project. I can briefly go through the evaluation that the Land Use Committee went through. On height, the Marcy Home Standard is three stories to fit in with a context on the north side of University Avenue Southeast. Code is four stories of right. We oppose five stories and accept the four stories as of right. And again, this goes to that transition from higher highs, high-density to the low-density area. And just because there's a taller building on the other side doesn't necessarily mean that the north side needs to have a tall building. I know we have someone here who led the master plan can maybe talk more about the thinking of the neighborhood on that. Parking, I know that's a particular standard because it's in the university area. If the building were reduced to four stories, I think the parking variance would go away. Floor area ratio, same thing. Without that fifth floor, the floor area ratio would go away. I would like to comment that I seem to recall years ago when we eliminated the minimum lot area, that we looked to the floor area ratio as a control on the bulk of a building. And this is proposed at 2.91, where 2.4 is, is the standard. So, I, I would look to you to use FAR as the control for minimum lot area that we eliminated several years ago. Materials, we just, we would prefer more brick. We see lots of brick in the, in that neighborhood, and certainly would ask you to add as a condition to the site plan review that at least the corner at 4th Avenue and University Avenue be, be brick. The first-floor frontage, particularly on the west side, we must give credit to the proposer who did modify that greatly to make it a much more pedestrian-friendly ground floor. The unit mix, it's a lot of one-bedrooms, which I think will fit the population likely to live in this part of the neighborhood. So, we applaud that and are glad to see, we hope, the end of those four-bedroom rooming house-type apartments that are all around Dinkytown. So, in conclusion, I ask you to deny the CUP for five stories. I think that would also deny the parking variance, the FAR variance, but it's all dependent on that five-story, I think. I would want to note that CPM came to the Land Use Committee numerous times and were very good about answering our questions and modifying as they saw that they could to bake this a better project for the neighborhood. And you'll see this particularly on the ground floor. So, our thanks to them for being sincere engagers with the community. We have other people from the neighborhood, but I don't know if they were choosing to speak or not. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Arlen Abel, and I own and have owned for 25 years the property that's at Jason's, that brick building that you see. And you have some handouts from me to try to make more brief what I have to say. And I'm asking the Commission also to deny the conditional use permit to allow the five stories. My principal motive in doing that is if there's four stories, it would reduce the number of units from 43 to maybe 32 or something like that, and it would put the ratio of units to available parking a little more imbalanced because the parking is my primary I want to just correct, I think there's an error in the staff report that states that the conditional permit would not injure the enjoyment of other property in the area. If anybody had been in maybe seven or eight of my units, they would immediately be able to recognize that there would be a big difference in light, in visual. Right now, eight units can see all the way over to 4th Street. With the building, it's 18 feet away and conceivably five stories high. You'd pull your shades as soon as you occupied the unit for privacy. But the main thing, I think, also is parking. I provide, I have 23 spaces that, that, the building that I'm talking about is 26 units, has 23 parking spaces. And until a few years ago, I even had a few additional spaces to be able to lease to people who had two cars. For the past year, I don't even have a space for myself. I park by the dumpster when I come to work on the building. And so, there is not a movement away from a need for less parking, but there's a need for more parking. And it gets into the question of guests, that my tenants may come. And I'm here on behalf of my tenants, by the way. That's my principal motive here. Marcy Homes School is just across the street. They have a staff of 70 people. There, there's only eight off-street parking spots for the school staff, and they're heavily dependent on that street, on 4th Street, for their parking. And there's the Church of Minneapolis, which on Sundays, they have no parking there either. So, the parking is a really critical consideration. There are two other properties that are mentioned in the staff report. One is, one is Cozy Flats, which is two blocks to the east, closer to the university, and the Elysian. I can't speak to the Elysian, but I can speak to Cozy Flats. I did a little field research this afternoon, and I talked to the person who answered the phone. Cozy Flats is four stories, just built a few years ago. She told me that they have 48 units, and there are 39 parking spaces. I can't verify that, but that's what I was told, which is a significantly higher ratio of parking to spaces. Where just in October, at the end of the lease-up season for the university, they do have vacancies. I could rent there, but their parking spaces are all used up. But I could be put on a parking, I could be put on a waiting list. And I suggest that that's simply an indication of what people want in the area and what 401 would probably experience as well. So, I had, I would anticipate a lot of using public street parking, and I don't think that, you know, because there's such a generous allocation of bicycle space, that's necessarily going to change tenants' habits. In my own case, in that specific location, I used to have 75% students. Now, I have 25% students. But ironically, 100% of the students have car space, and it's, it's a very affordable housing place. One-bedroom rents are $800 on a foot-by-foot basis. It's half of what 401 will be charging. And people who don't have a car are people who can't afford it, low-income workers downtown. And I don't think those will be the people who will be occupying 401. So, that's, I just have one more point. I'm concerned about, I'm 18 feet away, and I'm concerned about drainage. If, oh, if you look, this is what I, you have this. Take a look at that. The white is my building here, and the roof is, the half of the roof drains to the east and the other half drains to the west. I have four scoppers on the west side of the building that come down, and in the past, as you can see, the north part all drained to 4th Street because it was a parking lot. I can't do that anymore. And I'm going to have to, this, it's about 3,000 square feet of roof space that's going to have to be drained between these two buildings. And so, I'm very concerned that that, and I have garden-level apartments along that side, and so I have to be really careful about drainage, that I don't end up with a bunch of flooded-out apartments. And so, that's a real consideration. At the very least, I would hope that maybe approvals can be contingent on making certain that we can work out with the developer something that really makes sense, both with respect to drainage and screening, because there's going to be a lot of activity on that sidewalk on the east side of 401, especially if there's 45 bicyclists coming in and out every day, 18 feet away from eight bedrooms. And so, I hope we can work something out with 401 neighbors on dealing with that. And so, that's the other concern. I think that covers most of what I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hello. My name is Grant Sim, oh, boy. My name is Grant Simons. I'm at 1127 4th Street Southeast. I'm representing Neighbors for More Neighbors as well as the Minnesota Student Association at the U of M. Main reason I'm speaking in favor of this project is that we are below 3% vacancy rate right now in the entire city. The need for housing is getting towards kind of one of the highest The need for housing is getting towards kind of one of the highest points that we've ever seen. Student housing is also reaching one of the higher points. Having access to just more units in general would be great. Just in the past couple of years, I've seen already some changes in housing prices and where people are living and kind of the availability of being able to spread out instead of all being contained into kind of smaller areas because the majority of the area used to be all kind of single-family houses and we weren't, we didn't have this dense kind of housing that is a good example here at 401 in the past five years. But I've started to see that change after Elysian and Bridges and 412 Lofts and lots of other apartments that are much smaller than this have already made a big impact. And I really don't see a big difference between five or four stories. I think the argument that, you know, the north side and the south side are a major difference and that the north side needs to step down, I think is a little bit silly with no offense. I think that, you know, you look at, you look at a lot of older cities and it's a balance. It's a balance that goes down a street. And I think that, you know, what's going on here and what's going to go on in the future is that, you know, a lot of these buildings that are on the north side of Fourth Street, yeah, north side of Fourth, or University, sorry, are starting to age and we're going to maybe see some teardowns in the future. So having a balance along that street is possibly good for the future. Then my last point that I make in favor of kind of more bike parking stalls and less car parking is that there is a future, you know, protected bike lane that's going to go down, Fourth Street and University. There's potential for University and Fourth Street to have BRT stretching beyond the river down from Hennepin, as well as kind of future projects with University extending transit along the way. So I am asking for your support today of this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Wunderlich. I live at 413 Fifth Street Southeast in the Marcy Homes neighborhood. And I'm also on the Marcy Homes Land Use Committee, but I'm speaking here on behalf of myself as a neighbor. And I have some comments I prepared here, but I would like to address the question about parking. There's this thinking that by, somehow by not providing parking, we're going to force people onto their bikes. And I want to point out, the building behind me at 419 Sixth Street Southeast has recently been going through a renovation. It was naturally occurring affordable housing, primarily one-bedroom units and generally low-income, working-class people that lived there, probably some TAs and some people that work at the university. They've been renovating these apartments. The developer or the owner of the building told us that he was bringing in a, quote, "better class" of tenant. It's now primarily undergraduate students and every one of them has a car. The parking lot has probably about 35 spaces and we would see on average maybe six or eight cars in that parking lot over the past couple of years. And now, just in the past four months, it's got 20-plus cars and the building's only half rented up. So this idea that students aren't going to bring cars and they're going to ride their bikes just isn't what's happening in the neighborhood. So I just had a couple of observations about CPED's review on this. The housing on this stretch of University Avenue between Central and the freeway is made up primarily of early 20th century duplex, triplex, gabled roof, small apartment buildings, plus an assortment of 1960s-era three-story apartment buildings situated on large lots, lots of open green space. And that's in keeping with the area's designation of this area as medium density. The particular block that this building has proposed has two 1960s three-story apartment buildings, a duplex and the only single-family home on University between Northeast and Prospect Park. Again, that's, you know, low to medium density, medium density as the neighborhood plan calls for. A five-story lot line to lot line, 43-unit, high-density apartment building, it just isn't compatible with that particular, with that particular block. And furthermore, while the development is two blocks from the business node at Sixth and University, it's also three blocks to the much busier intersection of University and Central. And from that perspective, it's actually right in the middle of and at the lowest point of density along that stretch, again, just like the residential feel that the neighborhood plan calls for maintaining in that area in its small-area plan. The only other five-story apartment building on that stretch of University is that 600 University at 1960 building. The lot that that building is on is almost twice the size as of the lot at 401. It's surrounded by at least 35 parking spaces. And that is in an area that's designated as high-density in the neighborhood plan and it's directly adjacent to an industrial property. So again, I don't think that that's fair to compare that building to what's happening on the other side of University. It really is a different feel, one side to the other of University, and it is the defining corridor in the neighborhood's small-area plan. And again, I serve on the land use committee. The developer did come to our meetings regularly. We offered all kinds of feedback about changes that he could make to that building that would be acceptable to the neighborhood. There's nothing particularly unique about this lot that would necessitate granting the variance for a five-story building, other than the numbers don't work. That, to me, speaks that it's an economic consideration, which isn't really what the conditional use permit is all about. That was completely evident. Either the building's too big or the lot's too small. It just, it doesn't fit, so. On the other hand, as been mentioned here, by reducing, by reducing the building to four stories, it kind of moots the other questions about parking and the floor area ratio. So I would ask that you deny the conditional use for the four, for the five stories. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have several applications before us, a total of eight, starting off with the conditional use permit for height. Are there any further questions or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell?
Couple, couple of questions for staff. So the parking requirement, we're in the university district here, right? If this were not in the university district, what would the parking requirement for this?
Zero.
Zero, okay. Okay. And then the, I am not mistaken, right, in thinking this is a five-story building at 52 feet, but it, as of right, is four stories and 56 feet?
Correct.
So if we're talking built form, this is actually underneath the maximum height, maximum height in feet, as measured in feet?
Yep. If you're looking at the zoning district maximum, it would be under the measurement in feet, but not in stories.
Right.
Yep.
And then the density, could you walk through the, what the actual density per acre of this is and where the barriers are and so forth and how that's measured? Between medium and high, so we've got medium and high density.
Oh, yeah.
This is high density. If you could just talk through that again. And what I am wondering is, you know, this is a building of one-bedrooms and studios. And I want to just understand how the density is measured for purposes of the plan and how that relates to the actual occupancy of the building. So for example, if all of these are two bedrooms and there were theoretically the same occupancy for the building, but, I don't know, 40% fewer units, how would that change the equation?
Commissioner Rockwell, so for, in terms of density for the small-area plan and also for the zoning code, we're just looking strictly at dwelling units per acre, so it doesn't get at occupancy at all. So presumably, it would be one, maybe two people per unit, but we're really not looking at that. So the small-area plan does call for medium density in this area. This qualifies as very high density because there's smaller, smaller units than maybe otherwise would be looked at for a medium-density housing.
And, sorry, what's the range? Do you know offhand what the range is for medium?
I apologize, I don't have that right here.
That's okay, cool.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, hi, Mayling. I just had a question on the conditional use permit, condition number two. How did we arrive at eight as the number of bicycle parking spaces?
I believe that was provided on their plans and I wanted to capture that, but let me see.
And then I was just curious as to why it was just along University and not along Fourth. There's a reason for that or if it was just kind of?
Thank you. So there was, there were eight short-term bicycle parking spaces in their site plans, so staff just wanted to capture that and ensure that that was provided. But those would be intended for visitor parking spaces. It's actually not a required minimum in the zoning code.
Cool. But there wasn't like a compelling reason that it wasn't shown on the other street? Or it just happened to be what they showed and you were capturing that, so it would be at least there?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. And then going back to Commissioner Rockwell's question, so medium density, so in the comp plan, we say medium density is 20 to 50 dwelling units per acre. And so this proposal would be 172 dwelling units per acre.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or would someone like to start things off with a Eight applications before us, starting with item A, the conditional use permit for height, several variances, site plan review. Commissioner Rockwell?
You'll start us off with a motion to get things moving. I will move to approve staff recommendation on item A, conditional use permit.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item A, the conditional use permit for height. Any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell?
No.
Oh, Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I just wondered if I can make a friendly amendment to condition number two to increase the number of bicycle parking spaces. It seems like if we're having a building with this many units and the idea is that there'd be a bike lane going nearby, it'd be nice if it was a higher number of people that could visit tenants of this. So I'm wondering if we could possibly just say, you know, for example, 16 bicycle parking spaces along the public right-of-way, you know, I'm indifferent as to where, but as long as they're accessible.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
To clarify, the, it doesn't matter if it's on University, you mean University or Fourth. Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to amend condition number two to increase the number of bicycle parking spaces. And Commissioner Lupe here, how many were you proposing to increase? Okay, 16. So we have a motion and a second to increase the number of bicycle parking spaces to 16. Is there any further discussion on that amendment?
Does it matter if we also have to add either University or Fourth Street or just because it just says University?
And Commissioner Lupe here, maybe you could clarify, should we just strike the language related to the?
You could just leave it and say, you know, and an additional eight to be determined by the applicant and staff along the public right-of-way.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? Hearing none, we can add that on a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We can go back to our original motion to approve the conditional use permit. Is there any further discussion on that? I can add, since a few of the speakers talked about that, I do think, you know, five stories in this location, particularly as Commissioner Rockwell pointed out, the actual height of the building is about four feet less than the maximum height in feet that's allowed. The reason for the, triggering the conditional use permit has to do with the number of stories. I think at this location, since it is directly adjacent to an activity center, five stories is generally consistent with the character of the area, particularly when you look at the surrounding types of structures. As one of the speakers pointed out, there is a proposal for much more dense development just across the street from here. So I think we do have the policy direction to support a building of this height at this location. So if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Reeland?
No.
That is seven to one.
All right, and that motion carries. Moving along, we have several variances as well as a site plan review. Commissioner Rockwell?
I would move to approve staff recommendations on items B, C, and D, setback variances.
All right, we have a motion to approve items B, C, and D, the variances for setbacks. Is there a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? Commissioner Slack?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't see this item at the committee's hall because I was absent. But I guess I have some questions regarding item D and the variance for the site yard setback. It's a pretty big site. And so seeing that there are seven or eight other variances here, I'm just wondering what the implications are of item D and the need to go from 11 or from 13 to 11 and a half. And so whether there is a valid sort of response to the question, I'd probably vote against item D.
All right. Might ask, Commissioner Slack, are you looking for a response from staff or the applicant or either applicant? I guess.
I can address the need for that setback. The width of the site, since we're basically doing a zero lot line on the west side, on the fourth side, and getting kind of the minimum parking that can work, 11 and a half feet is what is left for the site on the setback on the east side. If that was brought back to the true setback, we wouldn't be able to have two rows of compact parking in the required aisle. One of the differences, if it was a four-story building, which actually we would be under the height, we would only need 11-foot setback, but that's why we need that additional foot and a half.
And are there any further questions or any further discussion on the motion to approve items B, C, and D? If there are none, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Reeland?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. Moving along, we have three more variances as well as site plan review. I'll note, we have a memo from staff clarifying the percentage of compact parking spaces in variance G. That should be stated as 94% as opposed to 81%. Would someone like to make a motion on any of those variances? Commissioner Rockwell?
I'll move approval of item E, variance to increase the maximum floor area, and staff recommendation to approve.
Right, we have a motion to approve item E, the variance for floor area ratio. Is there a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell?
Very briefly, you know, I just would echo Chair Brown's comments on the CUP where, you know, I think this is a weird part of our zoning code, that we have both a height in stories and a height in feet. And I think that it causes unnecessary distress. And I hope that we move away from that in our policy guidance in the next comprehensive plan. But, you know, this, well, this is a, an increase in density, the box is essentially as of right in zoning code if we're measuring the feet.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Reeland?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. Next, we have two more variances and a site plan review. Commissioner Rockwell? Commissioner Rockwell.
I will move approval of items F and G, noting the amendment to G that Chair Brown noted earlier.
All right, we have a motion to approve items F and G. Is there a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? Commissioner Magrino.
Just wanted to make a general comment that there is a pretty big, underutilized parking ramp about two blocks from here that only costs a few bucks a day to park in. And so I don't know that there is necessarily a huge parking crisis in this area quite yet.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I also want to just, you know, parking is a subject that comes up a lot. And this, the site one would not have any parking requirement as staff noted if we're not in the University District. And also, you know, the alternate modes of transportation at this site are not just biking. There are multiple buses that take you to multiple parts of the city, and it's also a really walkable neighborhood. And as we move towards thinking long-term about the future, you know, we do need to start utilizing those other forms of transportation in this city more. And as we think about our impacts on climate, you know, at our last Committee of the Whole meeting, we heard that were we to move fully to, or to 67% of drivers in Minneapolis in electric vehicles by 2050, we would still have to reduce driving miles by 40% to meet the city's own climate goals, which is kind of crazy. But it means that we're gonna have to think more dynamically about how we move around, and this is part of that. So I wanted to make that comment.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Relland?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. Finally, we have item H, the site plan review. Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I'd like to move item H, site plan review, but I'd like to strike sub condition nine because I couldn't find any compelling reason to differ from the exterior material standards.
We have a motion and a second to approve item H, the site plan review, with a modification striking condition nine related to exterior materials. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I'd like to hear from staff if that's possible.
Yeah.
Just on the rationale for number nine.
Yes, Commissioners, the item number nine is just to make sure that the staff is recommending this condition of rule to make sure that the elevations do not exceed what is currently proposed for fiber cement. So because they're, we're granting alternative compliance for exceeding the maximum fiber cement on each elevation, we just don't want to see that increasing in the final permits. So I would just want to understand the rationale behind striking that so that we can implement it correctly.
Well, in my opinion, we just had a very lengthy discussion about exterior material standards and why they're important. And, excuse me, I'm coming from a cold. It seems to me, I know I'm, I'm, there are differing opinions on this on the panel, but I don't feel necessarily that the sides of buildings should be held to a lower standard than the front or the back. And it seems to me as though some of these percentages differ greatly from what we would allow for fiber cement panel on the, on a building. And I don't think that that's necessarily a good thing, especially given the concerns of the neighborhood about massing in bulk. The neighborhood itself has mentioned, at least in the letter and in testimony, about wanting brick. I'm not gonna mandate brick, but I do think that there is a matter of at least holding them to the minimum standard we would require for quality of materials in the built environment. So that would be my finding.
So Commissioner Lupe here, I should clarify, I think the reason for the condition is?
Was to make sure it didn't exceed that. But I'm saying it should be held to the requirement.
So perhaps instead of striking the condition altogether, we should replace that condition with one that states that the east elevation or that all elevations of the building must comply with the material standards?
Yes.
Is that, I think that's maybe what you're intending?
Thank you, yes, that's my intent.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wanted to put numbers, you could just replace the 53 with 30% and the 36 with 30%, if you wanted specific numbers.
And replace the 36 with 30%?
I'm sorry, so they're exceeding, so they're proposing 53% fiber cement on the east elevation, so you could just replace the 53 with a 30. And then for the west elevation, replace the 36 with a 30. And then that would clarify the intent of what Commissioner Lupe here is saying.
All right, so we can clarify the original motion then. We can say was to approve the site plan review with a modification to condition nine stating that the maximum percentage of fiber cement siding on the east elevation shall not exceed 30% and the maximum percentage of fiber cement siding on the west elevation should not exceed 30%. All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Relland?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item four. Also concludes our business for today. We have Committee of the Whole on Thursday, and we are adjourned.